Good evening. We'd like to start tonight's South Bend Common Council meeting. And before we begin, we'd like to have our invocation and welcome to South Bend and to Saint Joseph County, Father Paul Ibarra.
Brothers and sisters, Wallace Stegner once wrote, "There is a sense in which we are all each other's consequence. In your service to this great city of South Bend, you all hope to effect change for the betterment of all those around you. My prayer is that you are made better for it as well. Let us pray." God guide us as we act with character and conviction, and we may listen with understanding and goodwill, and speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. God guide us as we act with character and conviction, and we may listen with understanding and goodwill, and speak with charity and restraint. God, we ask this of your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One way, another way, whatever they be, and justice is for all.
You may be seated. We'd like for our clerk, Tyler, to please take the role.
President Tim Scott, access. Councilmember Preston, here. Randy Kelly, here. Councilmember Broden, here. Dr. Varner, here. Vice President Davis, here. Mr. Boardy, here. Mr. Furlett, here. Councilmember White, excuse me.
Okay.
Seven present.
Thank you. Um, we have our court. We'd like for you now to please give us a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has expected the minutes of the July 25, 2016, meeting of the Common Council in South Bend to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the change be approved.
Will you accept? Sir, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. It is Terry. Under special announcements, we'll wait for a second, making sure everybody gets their copy. First of all, we'd like to announce that Bill Number 35-16 will be heard on September the 12th, that's regarding the South Bend Airport. Bill Number 35-16 will be heard on September the 12th, 2016. We also would like to announce that we will be taking applications for people who are interested in serving on the MBE/WBE Utilization Board. That's the MBE/WBE Minority Business Enterprise, Women Business Enterprise Utilization Boards, Transport, and Historical Preservation. Those three boards and those applications, you can pick up in the clerk's office, city clerk here, on the fourth floor, and they're due by Wednesday, August 24th, by noon. Again, those boards are the MBE/WBE Utilization Board, Transport, there's some opening there, and the Historical Preservation Board. They're due August 24th by noon. Now we will move to Bill 1663.
Bill Number 1663. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly honoring and commending Dennis J. Andreas, Executive Director of the Magnificent Morris, for his remarkable record of championing the hottest ticket in town.
Thank you, Representative.
Okay, thank you. We'd like for you to put your support to Dennis and your wife, please, come forth. And hope it's family, the family, cousins, relatives, anybody else here?
Staff.
Staff, come on up here. All the staff who's been working with him. Okay. Whereas the South Bend Common Council notes that the Morris Performing Arts Center, located in the true heart of downtown South Bend, has become a most popular destination venue for people of all ages, thanks to the vision, dedication, and the very creative leadership of its executive director, Dennis J. Andreas. And whereas 2,564 Seate Morris Theater, which was built in 1922 and restored in the 1990s, has been consistently ranked each year since 2000 in the top 100 Theaters Worldwide by Gold Star Magazine, won the outstanding historic theater award in 2015, which was presented by the League of Historic American Theaters for demonstrating excellence in community impact, quality of programs and services, and quality of physical restoration, and received the Facility Magazine Prime Site Award every year since 2006, all under Dennis' leadership, with his keen enthusiasm being the driving force behind the theater's success. And whereas currently Morris Performing Arts Center has 14 commercial promoters, and is the home to three residence-producing companies, Broadway Theater League of South Bend Incorporated, the South Bend Symphony Orchestra, and the Sasso Dance Theater, who all provide the best entertainment, from pops, concerts, dance symphonies, rock concerts, and the magnificent ball events at the Palais Aurora. And whereas Dennis Andreas and his great staff have promoted an event, a variety of other entertainment offerings such as the Morris Bistro Restaurants, where a limited number of dinner show tickets, packages including preferred seating at the Showtime, and the outdoor lunchtime concert series, Fridays by the South, which began in 2001, which has held throughout the summer, have grown into traditions for all to enjoy. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1. The South Bend Common Council proudly recognizes the work of Dennis J. Andreas, the Executive Director of the Magnificent Morris, for the past 16 years for always using his creative juices for developing the Morris into a major player in the world of performing arts and concert entertainment. Section 2. The Common Council publicly wishes Dennis, his wife Catherine, and their entire family all the very best in the years ahead. You have truly enriched the city of South Bend community and brought great joy to so many. Section 3. This resolution shall be in full force and effects from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approved by the mayor. And it's been a great honor to be working with you for the last nine years that I've been on the council. You have brought a world-renowned center to us and have been very creative. I appreciate your thoughts. I wish you the best of health as you recover. I'm glad you're doing better. I'm glad for your wife who's been here beside your side. We thank you for your team here. You can introduce your team when you come up to speak. And so we will be hearing from you at this time, and then we will go and hear from our council.
Thank you. I really do appreciate all the support that the city council has given me over the last 16 years. It's been one hell of a run, and it's been a good run, so thank you. I also like to thank the mayor for his support over the last couple of years, and we've been working hard to bring the national shows to the theater. I'd like to introduce especially my wife Catherine, who's put up with me for 16 years. 16 years here, but 44 years of marriage. 16 years in the theater, like 44 years of marriage. And staff here. Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen is the Director of Marketing and Publications for us. And Rachelle is my Director for Catering and Food Sales in the Palais Royale. So again, thank you very much.
And we'll take comment then from the city council. We'll start with Second District Councilmember Regina Williams-Pestle.
I just want to thank you for bringing, as you said, the national shows here. It's really amazing. One of the things I love about being in South Bend is that Chicago's right down the road. And now a wonderful thing is that I don't have to go to Chicago to get the really great shows. Thank you.
I feel privileged to call Dennis, to not just have known him for a number of years, but to call him a friend. The work you've done there is remarkable. When I was on the council the first time, 2007, Dennis would come into budget presentations. He was the only department head that would come in with costuming, and lights, and props, and music. And I'm saying that publicly so that Aaron Perry hears me, so that he can maybe start thinking about that for your budget presentation. It's actually why I ran again, hoping to see some more budget presentations, and so now I'm really disappointed. But I can't thank you enough for the work you've done and for your friendship. The work there is remarkable, and it truly is a world-class place, and thanks to all of your efforts.
Thank you. Your budget spoke to his heart and the way it was presented, but thank you so much for the gifts that you have contributed to this community in this position. And Catherine, special thanks to you for sharing him with us for the 16 years. Great that you corrected the 44, because I know you're both in a partnership. I don't remember who I met first, but great folks who've contributed greatly to our city. So thank you very much, and best wishes to you.
Dennis and Catherine, over the years, can't tell you how many times the Morris Valley's been referred to as one of the crown jewels in the city, and as a building it certainly is, but I would have to say that it's just a building without the real jewel, which was you and your staff, which did all the hard work that it took to keep it filled and to keep it cared for. I have a great deal of both respect and admiration for the successes you've brought to the city, and I wish you well in the future, because you've earned it.
Thank you.
I'll think of what I wanted to say later, I'm sure. Anyway, we've been such beneficiaries of your passion and your dedication, and I just, I don't think I could find the words to thank you for all you've done for South Bend and for the arts. Thank you very much. You'll be missed.
Yeah, thank you so much for your service, and thank you for your willingness to consider, you know, new ideas, different types of shows. I know we've worked together on a few of those things, so thank you so much. And with that, we'd like to open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor?
Chuck Bealow, Building Commissioner, City of South Bend, Saint Joseph County. I remember one morning before a meeting in the mayor's office, Dennis came up to me, and I could tell by the expression on his face that he had some great news. Guess what? What? I figured out that if we change our beverage cup size, we can increase our intermission net by 7%. I feigned excitement. That's great, Dennis. Yeah, I know. Beverage cup size was only one aspect of what went into making the Morris the showcase that it is today. Countless hours of booking the right shows for the audience dynamics of this area, negotiating contracts with questionable acts with unproven track records, and supervising the dream of transforming this once-aged landmark into a bejeweled showcase are just some of the day-to-day chores in which Dennis had at hand. Dennis accomplished something that no one else had the vision to achieve. He created excitement. If you go downtown on most any night, there are people streaming to the Morris to view the latest offering in live entertainment. Along the way, they may stop for dinner at one of the many restaurants in the area, or stroll through a shop, or grab a snack on their way. And when they leave, they remember downtown South Bend as being a place where things are happening. I never doubted that Dennis would accomplish the transformation to the Morris we now witness. After all, he always saw the beverage cup as being half-full.
Good evening. I'm Marvin Curtis. I am the very proud dean of the Emerson American School of the Arts, and also the president of the Morris Performers Board. And I'm here to say to Dennis and to his wife that we thank him for his service, and I think we all can appreciate what the Morris has done for South Bend. I've been here now nine years, and the Morris has been a second home to me, with the symphony, with the different Broadway plays. So Dennis has brought to our city some great things, and we appreciate him. We wish him well in his retirement and take some rest. Thank you.
A little affirmation.
Sure.
A little affirmation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Can you come down a step so you don't want to go back there? Y'all coming on down here. Thank you. You're welcome. Come on, Jack. No, come on, Jack. I want this last cheese. Yes. So. Representing the city, our status, there he is, Mr. James Mueller, in the back. Thank you for being here, our Chief of Staff. There will be no reports from our city offices at this time, so now I'd like to have a motion to resolve it to, there is no resolving to the committee. No, we're not moving to it. Let's go settle on down to third reading. Wonderful. We cannot hear tonight.
Resolutions.
Okay, go for it. Our resolutions.
39-16. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals of the Saint Joseph County, Indiana, for the property located at 214 Olive Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Okay, our zoning action committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to you with favorable report. Now Representative. Please state your name and your comments.
Good evening. Chuck Bealow, Building Commissioner, City of South Bend, Saint Joseph County, with offices at 125 South Lafayette, South Bend. At the August 3 meeting of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, this petition at 214 Olive Street for a special exception for a fire station in an SF2 zoning district was heard and comes to you with favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Representative. Mr. Dennis, just show your name and your address. Everybody.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike Danz from Danz Charner and Associates, 1643 Thomas Drive, here in South Bend, representing the city of South Bend. As Chuck had mentioned, what we're asking council to do is to approve a special exception for Orange and Olive Street. This is the existing location for fire station for the city of South Bend, and because of the zoning classification that it has right now, which is SF2, the existing station is illegal non-conform use under the city zoning codes. The whole point of what we're doing here is to raise that existing building and build a new fire station. Because of that, we had to go through the, basically, a special exception in variance for the site to bring it into performance with today's standards. But as we had told council in the committee meeting, what we will end up doing is building a brand-new station, and that station will be functional before the old one is tore down. And that's how we have to do it in this particular case. We don't want to lose any fire protection for this portion of the city of South Bend. The site plan that you see shows the new building, it'll be up at the northwest corner of the site. The site contains about 2.4 acres. Access for the fire station will be off of Olive Street. What we've also done in this particular case, because there is a lot of open space area, there will also be a recreational track that will be used by the firefighters for exercising, but it'll also be used by the neighborhood as well in the open area that's there. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, is there any questions from our representatives, starting from my far right? Yes, yes. Still questions up here?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we'd like to open this up to the public. All those who'd like to speak in favor of this resolution, please come forth.
I'm Senator Brown, here with 222 East Navarre Street. Representative White, our group of 12 members for part of the government. And I'd like to say, I'm kind of glad the fire station's going in that particular area, because it builds a lot for the neighborhood. I lived over there, 55, I grew up over there, just where I was raised at, where that fire station is going. And we've been having a lot of crime and stuff in that area. Lot of shootings on Linden, Savin Street. The three oldest families on that street are this, the Ward family, who's now, Wendy Scott, Mayor Ward, the Brown family, and I don't want to leave nobody having issues, the Browns, the Wards, we brought the oldest family there, you know? And I think by putting that fire station there, that's going to really bring a lot of attention to the neighborhood. Maybe we just Savin Street pays, I don't know, with a little luck, you know? So I hope so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, my name is Roger Stewart.
No, that one, right in front of you.
Big one.
That one.
This one?
No, no black thing.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
You can just speak directly.
Just speak directly.
Yeah, and it'll project.
Okay. My name is Roger Stewart. You know I say, but just like he said about Olive Street, they towards, down, where I live at, on Olive Street, that's where I live, 218 Olive Street, that's where the fire station is at. So we had to move. I walk from there to Central School every day, and I went to track practice. At school field, I walked there, and then when I come from track practice, I walk all the way back to Olive Street, so I know about that whole little route. And I know about sidewalks and curbs, like he said, and I know about not getting nothing done. And then when everybody talking about, just like the people that came up before, they've done an excellent job, the Morris City and stuff like that, but then we need something done back there. We don't even know casinos. This is why the neighborhood will keep going down, because everybody keep promoting gambling. And then this is why them neighborhoods don't bring themselves up, because if y'all keep them on gambling, then everybody lose their money, then they, what? They can't come up. They don't put them liquor stores in Granger, they don't put them in Mission Walker, they put them on everywhere, there's trouble everywhere, ain't nobody got no job. And when you come downtown, you cannot get nowhere for four winters, and then if you look at it, and I'm not being prejudiced, nobody, all them kids can't go to sleep, because you know why? Baseball, it's all lights and then flares and everything after the game, they can't come to it, they don't have enough money. But then it's right across the street from them. So do something about the kids, let them go to sleep at least, instead of keep putting entertainment for everybody else that don't need it, that don't stay there. If you stay there, fine, we don't need gambling, we don't need fireworks and all that, and then the kids across the street say, hey mama, can I go over there? Say, no, we don't have no money, we got to choose between either. Okay? So again, like I said about Olive Street, and then we, no bussing, we walked. And I'm saying, so y'all should try to work on that, before you congratulate everybody on how you doing, how you look, on how South Bend look. Put hide behind them screens, because you know, it might look good on western, but behind the screens, it's like a western movie, it's prom, so cut it out.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Moving forward to those who would like to oppose. Anybody like to speak in opposition?
Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed.
Move for the adoption of 39-16.
Second. Okay, Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston? Aye. Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Furlett?
Aye.
John Boardy?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Thank you. Now could you please re-resolve 1659?
1659. A resolution reconfirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution, Number 4075-11, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3849 Shower Lux Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, as an economic revitalization area for a purpose of an eight-year real property tax abatement, and changing ownership from SBG Realty to LLC to Sumotini Realty LLC.
Motion to accept the substitute. Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Ms. Carrie, we now would like to have a report from our Community Investment Committee?
Community Investment sends this forward favorably.
Okay, now we would like to have Representative.
Sarah Heisman, Department of Community Investment, with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Somoskeen has taken over ownership on the real property portion of what was previously SBG Realty LLC, and we are looking to have the transfer of the resolution so that we have it in the right.
Could you just go over a little bit later?
Is that better?
Yeah.
My apologies. So we are looking to have the resolution transferred so it's in the appropriate name of the current title holder. And then Paul Morrison is here from Somoskeen to give you a little bit more information.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Well, again, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to take the time to address the council on this issue. Again, my name is Paul Morrison, and I'm the Operations Manager at Somoskeen. I have been in that capacity since 2011, and I'm here on the behalf of the owners of Somoskeen Realty LLC. They wish to have been here this evening, but they will not be back in the States from Italy until late October, so I'm again speaking on their behalf. In December of 2010, SBG Realty LLC petitioned the South Bend Common Council for a reduction of real property taxes with a proposal to build a manufacturing facility in what they had hoped would be an economic revitalization area. Now based on the presentation made to the council back in January of 2011, an abatement was granted by this council for an eight-year period under Resolution Number 4,075-10. Subsequently, a building was constructed to house the manufacturing facility of Somoskeen North America LLC. In this facility, we manufacture steel-ground gears for the heavy truck industry. In May of 2012, SBG Realty filed the initial Form 322 requesting a property tax basis. Due to a change in the business interest in the owners of SBG Realty LLC, the building was sold on October 20 of 2015. Now, because Somoskeen Realty was created specifically by the owners of Somoskeen North America to purchase and hold this property, Somoskeen North America continues its manufacturing at this site as of today. With the purchase of the building, coupled with the previous investments that the family has made in equipment and machinery, I'm proud to report that the owners of Somoskeen North America have invested nearly $20 million here in South Bend. Now, Form 322 was submitted in July of this year to request a transfer of the deduction of this property. I believe you have a copy of that in your packets. And I'm here to request the council's approval to transfer pursuant to the filing of this Form 322 and the transfer of the ownership of this property. You know, again, I thank you for your time this evening, and I'm filled with great questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? On the council at this time? This side? All right, thank you. We don't have any questions at this time? Let's open it up to the
Sarah Heisman, Department of Community Investment, with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Somoskeen has taken over ownership on the real, on the real property portion of what was previously SBG Realty LLC, and we are also looking to have the transfer of the resolution so that we have it in the right.
Can you just go over a little bit later?
Is that better?
Yeah.
My apologies. Um, so, we are looking to have the resolution transferred so it's in the appropriate name of the current title holder. And then, Paul Morrison is here from Somoskeen to give you a little bit more information.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Well, again, good evening, and, and thank you for allowing me to, to take the time to address the, the council on this issue. Again, my name is Paul Morrison, and I'm the operations manager at Somoskeen. I have been in that capacity since 2011. And I'm here on the behalf of the owners of S, or of, uh, Somoskeen Realty LLC. They wish to have been, to have been here this evening, but they will not be back in the States from Italy until late October. So, I'm, again, speaking on their behalf. Um, in December of 2010, SBG Realty LLC petitioned the South Bend Common Council for a reduction of real property taxes with a proposal to build a manufacturing facility in what they had hoped would be an economic revitalization area. Now, based on the presentation made to the council back in January of 2011, an abatement was granted by this council for an eight-year period under resolution number 4075-10. Subsequently, a building was constructed to house the manufacturing facility of Somoskeen North America LLC. In this facility, we manufacture steel ground gears for the heavy truck industry. In May of 2012, SBG Realty filed the initial Form 322 requesting a property tax basis. Due to a change in the business, business interests in the owners of SBG Realty LLC, the building was sold on October 20 of 2015. Now, because Somoskeen Realty was created specifically by the owners of Somoskeen North America to purchase and hold this property, uh, Somoskeen North America continues its manufacturing on, at this site, uh, as of today. With the purchase of the building, coupled with the previous investments that the family has made in equipment and machinery, I'm proud to report that the owners of Somoskeen North America have invested nearly $20 million here in South Bend. Now, Form 322 was submitted in July of this year to request a transfer of the deduction of this property. I believe you have a copy of that in your packets. And I'm here to request the council's approval to transfer pursuant to the filing of this Form 322 and the transfer of the ownership of this property. Um, you know, I, again, I thank you for your time this evening, and I'm filled with great questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council at this time? This side? All right, thank you. We don't have any questions at this time? Let's open it up to the public. Those of you in the public who would like to speak in favor? Those in the public who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we close. Now, we move it back to the council.
Motion for the adoption of substitute 1659.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to ask Ms. Fowler to take the roll?
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Dr. Varnas?
Aye.
Mr. Boardy?
Aye.
Mr. Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Seven ayes. Thank you. I'd like to ask, um, our committee of the whole, Chair, Mr. Fort, to do the next one.
Chair, City Clerk, would you please read 1660?
1660. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, recommending that integrated and multifaceted approaches be publicly discussed and further developed, which address Canadian, Canadian geese.
Aye, thank you. Could I entertain a motion to hear the substitute?
Absolutely.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Committee report, please.
Uh, Health and Public Safety Committee met and recommended, uh, this bill favorably to council, subject to approval of the changes in Section 2.
Great. Is there a presenter?
There is a presenter. I'm Oliver Davis, 1801 Nash Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613. Glad to come before you tonight, and thank you for your ideas and comments that you had in, so we can prepare the substitute version. Again, right before we go there, um, this is a resolution regarding the different situations that we've been having regarding our geese. And we wanted to make sure that we plan and provide an opportunity for having a public dialogue on this prior to us having any kind of a crisis. And when we look at Section 1 and Section 2, they outline two key areas. Section 1, the South Bend Common Council believes that there should be public discussions with the city administration on Canada geese, and how if they are impacting our local area. In this way, integrated and multifaceted approaches, if needed, can be discussed with public in determining what is best for our city. And we talked about that this afternoon, we looked at even the Leeper Park situation, and then, it was glad to hear from our, um, Parks Director, who we're here for in a second. When we talked about the committee that he's establishing, and so, we changed Section 2, so it shall be as follows. The Common Council notes that the urban areas are encroaching the habitat of Canada geese, which must and should be balanced with developing positive measures for wildlife and humans to live in harmony for generations to come. The proposed Ecological Advisory Committee, which is to be approved by the Park, Board of Parks Committees, shall include integrated and multifaceted approaches, including the use of educational signage in addressing this concern. Again, we add that a part of the signage of using educational concerns, because we want to have signs where it says, "Do not feed the ducks," or like we already have there, as he will talk to you about what he did with our beavers, signs how he took that, to help educate the public on how to take care of our wildlife. And of course, the third section, this resolution shall be in full force and in effect from and after adoption by either council and approved by a mayor. At this time, I'd like to invite our Parks Director to please come up and talk about the Ecological Advisory Committee, and how that's going to work, and, um, we'll go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Davis and, and council for your, uh, interest in this particular topic. I believe it to be part of a broader topic, dealing with how we, um, deal with all our natural resources in our parks, inclusive of the plant species, wildlife species, and things of that nature. Um, as a matter of fact, we're undergoing one of the most comprehensive, um, planning, um, exercises the Parks Department's ever undertaken when it comes to natural resources management. Um, we're about halfway through the planning phase of our natural resource management plan, uh, which will be system-wide, so that'll deal with all of our parks. And in the, in the effort to help advance that, that work, um, for, for several reasons, we're forming an ecological advocacy group. Um, the resolution to form that, that particular committee went before the Park Board last month, and it's, uh, scheduled to be approved a week from today at our upcoming Park Board meeting. So, certainly looking forward to how that group will be able to interface with topics like this, um, and to continue to proactively plan for how we treat not only our wildlife, but all of our natural resources.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there any questions from?
Oh, sure, I'd be glad to. I, I drew upon an example of, I'm really proud of the way our staff, um, have, have dealt with situations like this to date. We were faced, um, recently with a decision that involved, uh, potentially trapping and euthanizing beavers along the riverfront. Uh, the beavers were damaging trees, uh, that were eroding the riverbank, uh, creating some unsafe situations there, uh, and even potentially situations where the trees could, could fall and injure pedestrians. The, really, the conventional decision would be to, uh, trap and remove the beavers, uh, from the environment. Unfortunately, there was nobody in the immediate area that would, uh, accept live beavers for transfer, and so, we were faced with a decision to, to euthanize them, and, and we thought a little bit harder about that, and the staff was really creative, particularly our city forester and his team, Brett Thompson, went out. Um, and they, they've now protected the base of all of the, um, trees that are at risk along the riverfront. You'll see about two feet's worth of chicken wire, um, on, on several of the trees all up and down the river. Uh, the beaver, turns out, uh, will not attack the trees that have that. So, this was a solution that allowed us to keep the beavers in their natural habitat while maintaining public safety and, um, integrity of our infrastructure, so. Uh, those are the types of solutions, I think, we'll continue to seek, um, before any other lethal type methods, so I'm, I'm pretty proud of our staff.
Great. Are there any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who should speak in favor?
All of us who would like to speak in favor, it's my opponent.
All right. My name is Charles Smith. I live at 2023 South Taylor Street. Most of you already know my main passion is animals, period, in general, don't matter which kind it is. Um, I'm here to support Mr. Davis's proposal, and what happened in Mishawaka is a mistake that many in this community have taken notice. It could have been prevented by listening to the professionals, professionals like United States Marine Society as well as DNR as well. Many didn't realize there were solutions to prevent this, as I'm one of them, as I'm not a geeseologist or anything like that, but obviously, we had the tools in front of us to figure it out, and many didn't even take notice to the problem. Mishawaka made a mistake, and now it is an opportunity for others to learn from it, and say, "How as well as what do we do?" Well, the hardest part, which, which is figuring out solutions, is already done, provided by the state. And our focus needs to be, how will we implement the solutions? And now is the, now is the time to prevent the problem. No matter where I look, it's, this solution was the least effective, it was only a very small temporary solution. Um, pretty much, they're going to have the same problem come next year if they don't figure out and actually implement and do some good solutions. I definitely support this, and I definitely support Perry in everything that he does, and I'm glad that this topic came in front of you guys, in front of the city of South Bend, and that you guys are willing to do something to prevent it from happening here. So, I definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I'm also in favor of this, obviously, anytime you're going to spend our tax money, and it might involve euthanizing any type of animal, we should be aware of that before it happens. Uh, we should be part of that discussion. I think we should be part of discussion on all of our tax dollars being spent, but especially when we're going to take the life of an animal. Uh, and in this case, it was 400 or so. Everybody obviously knows, I live in Mishawaka. So, Buter Park is in my backyard, Cam's Island Park is in my backyard. The geese would come up on our street, and, uh, they're messy, they're kind of noisy. People call them aggressive, uh, I've honestly, my, my children, I've got numerous pictures. Some of you folks might have seen them on Facebook, my daughter, when she was young, chasing some of the geese. I will say, she never was bitten by a goose, they hiss a lot. But, uh, it, it's a problem that obviously needs to be looked at, but the solution that the mayor of Mishawaka apparently made, um, I, I think was a very poor and rash decision. Uh, it solved the problem for less than a week. I actually drove down one of the streets in front of Buter Park a matter of days after they had gotten rid of these geese, and I took photographs and shared it, probably 100 geese that were already back in the park, wandering across the street blocking traffic. Uh, obviously, we can't just put a sign up that says, "Geese, you cannot be here." So, we need to find a, a good solution to this, and we need to find a way that we can live along with the animals. And, uh, I, I think talking and getting public input is very important, especially on a subject like this.
I'm Ken Glenn, and I live at 5758 Forest Shorewood Drive East in South Bend, Indiana, and, uh, commend the council on their, uh, consider, on Mr. Davis's consideration here and the council's, uh, follow-up on this initiative, um, yeah, of, uh, doing something, um, and setting a precedent, probably, for a lot of communities to use as a model, uh, setting the bar, so to speak, in, uh, what I believe will be coming up with a program that's going to work. Um, I thought that the, the Good Father had a very profound opening when he quoted Wallace Stanger. Um, there's a sense in which we are all each other's consequence, and I find that very profound for this situation. Uh, 400 Canada geese is a lot of birds to destroy. Uh, the Canada goose is probably the most regal among the migratory birds. Uh, they mate for life, they live as long as 30 years, and over the course of the reproductive time in those 30 years, every spring, they're going to have a hatch of, uh, goslings. Uh, each, each brood is on the average of four birds. Uh, South Bend happens to be almost smack center in one of the three major flyways in North America, and, uh, the Mississippi Flyway. So, we are visited by tens of thousands of birds, at least they fly over and some come to stay. We also have a resident population, which no longer migrate, because we offer them food, green grass is their primary diet, and, of course, they, as long as there's open water, they'll stay through the winter. Um, this initiative, uh, appears very well thought out, with the park involvement in this, um, an essential element is knowing the life cycle of the Canada goose. I won't go into those details now, um, but it, it's critical in understanding, um, how to accommodate the birds and how to accommodate our, our enjoyment of our parks. So, there has to be a major change on the people part, in that the parks need to be redesigned, wherein the open fields of mowed grass are, are, are not any, anymore, uh, available to the Canada goose. And by that, I mean, um, re-landscaping, using dooming grass, uh, uh, stones, and vegetation that the Canada goose does not want to eat. When the Canada goose arrives in February, uh, they, they mate, and then the young birds hatch in a couple of months. From that time on, those birds are going to stay as, 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 until death, they do part, once they have established their nest. The, the, the young, the young goslings walk the first day they're born to the grassy fields, and that's where they'll eat, that's where the geese will reside from February through August. These are critical times. After August, everybody's problem with geese will diminish, because they're now airborne and flying away and going to different areas. So, once again, uh, I commend the council on this, and I appreciate the opportunity to, for the public and myself to give input. Um, I really believe that, uh, South Bend can set a precedent here and be an example for, across America, for how to handle this situation. I thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mercedes Howard. I live in the South Bend area, and, um, I just wanted to comment on this bill and say that I am very pleased that we are looking into non-lethal methods to handle this issue, and that there are a great deal of resources out there where we can, um, deal with the geese populations in a humane way. I'm glad we're looking into that. I just have one question on Section 2 of the bill. So, this would be the second sentence that was actually striked out. Um, it stated the council, for their beliefs, until such a public meeting is held, that if the city administration has any relocation and/or extermination programs underway, that they be placed on hold. Following that sentence, um, is the sentence bringing up the Ecological Advisory Committee. Um, and I'm pleased about that, that the Board of Park Commissioners will be looking into using integrated and multifaceted approaches. Um, I just want to make sure that the public is still going to be involved, like that we will still have a say, and that even if, like, say that the Board of Park Commissioners would be choosing a lethal method, that we would still be able to put this on hold if there was enough public outcry, so I just want, I don't know, I guess that's kind of a question I'm asking, I don't know if there's anything we can do about that.
And at the, at the end of the public portion, uh, the presenters will have an opportunity for rebuttal where they can answer your question at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Glenn Allen Jose. I live 1514 South Bend, Indiana, with, excuse me, Mission Street. And, uh, well, the geese problem has been a problem for a very long time, since the very first one came up on the street. I'm pretty sure of that, the people in Mishawaka saying that, but they, uh, refuse to get ahead of the game. Now, what's, what's going on now as far as, uh, eliminating them? Uh, are those the same geese that be flying over by St. Mary's High, or St. Mary's College? When, uh, they be shooting guns, they get rid of them, or, or, uh, they just, just geese that be flying? But I don't think, uh, there's going to be even a, a chance, or it's going to take a very long time before be able to get rid of the geese. When you had the opportunity to get rid of the geese, you just watch one go by, then you watch two go by, and then all of a sudden, you got a big flock, and now it's a big thing. Okay. Just like underneath the viaduct over on Main Street. You got people sleeping underneath the viaduct, people, uh, doing construction work there, smelling like urine, that's another problem. The thing is, is to get ahead of the game and stop it before it gets too big of a problem, where you want to go through all these different situations in order to solve it. So, that's going to be a problem. And then, you got over on the west side, you got this, this bike lane, for people to ride down the bike lane. I'm sorry to get off the subject, but it's, it's a fact that the streets, we don't even go down that street.
And sir, please keep your, uh, comments focused on, uh, the Canadian goose resolution.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, as far as the geese, um, do, uh, they're, they're wild, right? They're wild geese. Okay? So, like, there's a bunch of hungry people in different countries, I mean, you know, you're going to euthanize them, which, I mean, I, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't know, uh, how it's going to end up. I mean, because once you get rid of them, I mean, if you take them up in civilization, they're going to fly back. So, I don't, I don't know exactly how the city of South Bend is going to handle that, but good luck.
Samuel Brown, 222 Navarre Street, City of South Bend. I would like to commend Mr. Davis, uh, for tipping his challenge of, of these geese. I don't know any difference between geese and a duck, but I wish he had have been down by Leeper Park, when he was, uh, he was out in this traffic through the, uh, Leeper, he was down by the duck ponds, because we losing a lot of the ducks down there, because I have to come that way every day to get out of my neighborhood. So, uh, I'm really, uh, commended him for doing this, and I wish he would have moved down by Leeper, because we still have some more construction to do down there, before we open this speed up to Michigan, and maybe we can save some of the ducks down there.
Hi, Sherwin, 1838 22 Ford Street, South Bend. I'm just glad to see that the council and the city has been proactive instead of reactive in this case. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brittany. I used to be a resident of Mission Walka, but I'm now a resident of Gosheim. But I did just want to come and say thank you for, you know, taking the time to actually, you know, consider this and, you know, come up with a non-lethal way of taking care of the animals because I feel like as the human species, we have a right, we have a, you know, moral obligation to take care of those who are weaker than us, who are different than us. And I feel like, you know, there's a lot of people who say there's a lot more important things that we could be worrying about. But I feel like, you know, the rule of all evil is that some lives matter less than others. And, you know, it was four hundred lives. And, you know, we still have to take a moment to think about, you know, what they wanted and what was, you know, best for them. And, you know, it's, we, it is just an animal, but we have to think about it. If it was a cat or a dog, those four hundred cats or dogs killed, how upset we would be about that. And we just have to consider their lives, you know, their lives matter to them, and, you know, we have to speak for them when they can't speak for themselves. So I thank you all for taking the time to talk about this.
Good evening. My name is Ramaga Nixon. I am a resident of Granger, Indiana. I am a humane educator with the Ethical Choices Program. I'm also really happy to see that we are taking measures for humane population control of geese. I would like to favor all humane methods of population control, such as immun contraception or adoling of eggs or the other methods that are discussed in the bill that are considered humane or recommended by the Humane Society. I have some reservations with respect to the point that was already brought up with the sentence that was struck out. The council further believes until such a public meeting is held that if the city administration has any relocation and/or extermination programs underway, that they be placed on hold. I have also another question as to why that was struck out, but I am very happy to hear that this issue being discussed. I'm happy to see the public support for the geese of South Bend, and I fully support all humane methods of geese population control. Thank you.
With that, oh, I'm sorry. Would anybody like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Presenters, you have five minutes per rebuttal.
A couple of things regarding Section Two, when it came down to taking out the language of putting on the restriction that you just mentioned. In order for that to happen, in talking with our Parks Director, Aaron Perry, he said that if there was some kind of movement toward having some extinction or any kind of movement, that would have to have been budgeted into our budget. He would ask for appropriation that would have to come back before this council that would have to have a public discussion before that would take place. And so since that would have to already have to come back before the council to do it, there was no need for us to continue to keep that in there because it would automatically trigger. In order for Mission Walka or any other council to have put that in there, budget, they had to bring it before the council. So we would have to bring that before the council to do that. So it was already brought up by us in our discussion this afternoon that we didn't have to do it because it's already not going to happen because it's not even budgeted to do anything on that step line. So that's why.
Yeah, just to reiterate, we don't have anything budgeted nor any pending plans to use lethal methods to deal with any of our wildlife problems. So I did want to reiterate that if I didn't make that clear. And the other topic would be that the park board meetings where some of these decisions are discussed are open to the public. Those happen on the third Monday of every month, 5:00 p.m. at the O'Brien Center. And the Ecological Advocacy Committee will also operate under the open door laws. So those meetings will also be public, so where these topics will be discussed.
And the council will get, our park chair of our parks will get a report. So we, as council people, will stay up to date with what's going on and what other recommendations. So we can weigh in on that also, too. So it would be an open process.
Thank you so much. Back to the council. Could I have a motion on substitute Bill 1660? Move the adoption of 1760 as amended?
Second.
Sorry, 60. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Gordy?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So that's up to you. Okay. Can you read our next resolution, please?
1661, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as Dillon Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for AM General LLC. Good evening.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Good evening, Sarah Heitzman.
The [inaudible]. Before, thank you.
Sorry, Community Investments sends this forward favorably.
Now, go ahead.
Thank you. Sarah Heitzman, Department of Community Investment, the office is on the 14th floor of this building. This is a move for AM General into a speculating, which is currently on Dillon Drive. It's a total investment of $3.2 million. For this particular abatement, we're looking at $1.1 million worth of personal property that they'll be purchasing. The total taxes on that new equipment is going to be $94,366. And the estimated taxes that were asked and obligated on this equipment over the five-year period is $43,483. And Eric and David are here from the company to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Just give us a brief summary.
Hello, my name is David Whitby. I'm the Vice President of Military Operations for AM General. AM General's service parks and logistics operation is a significant part of our business, largely due to the hundreds of thousands of Humvees that we support around the world with service parks, training, and other technical support. We are planning to move that business in order to become more efficient, reduce our cost structure, and therefore be more competitive. And this move is, was the business case that made the most sense for this location, to relocate that portion of our business.
Thank you. We're glad to hear that made the most sense to come to South Bend. Appreciate it. Now, with the jobs, because they're in Mission Walka, they would be transferred into South Bend. And so that's the 123 jobs that are already there, but they would now be transferred into South Bend.
That's correct. The jobs already exist. Most of them will go to the new location. A handful of them have already moved to our downtown headquarters and other offices around our facilities in the area.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from our council? Do you want to share something, anything else? You're good? Okay. All right. You want to make sure. All right. Anything on the side? Okay. Thank you. Now we go to our public. Those who like to speak in favor. Those who like to speak in, oh, whoa, 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 go ahead. Come on.
Samuel Brown, 222 East of our street, South Bend. I think it's a good idea that we didn't bring this from the South Bend side, for sure. My only question is, in that five-year period, I see we got 123 jobs that's coming already. In that five-year period, are we going to be able to get other jobs besides those?
Okay.
Will we have any expansion?
Yeah.
And if we do, more power to South Bend.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we would like to ask our presenters to answer that question to the best they can.
Yes, sir. It's a good question. We are becoming more efficient with this move, therefore will be more competitive. And as we bring more work and grow that business, more jobs can result, and this site has room for expansion should that be the outcome.
Okay. I appreciate that answer. All righty. Seeing no further questions, we now...
Motion to adopt 1661.
Second.
Okay. Our clerk.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Gordy?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Randy Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes?
Seven ayes. It's all complete. Now, could we have a first reading on Bill Number 4016?
First reading. First reading.
Thank you.
Forty dash sixteen. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 4246 Megan Billa Court, Councilmanic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send 4016 to zoning annexation for September 26.
Second and third reading? Yes? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it is carried. Could we have a first reading on Bill 4116?
4116. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 401 East Colfax Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send 4116 to zoning annexation on September 26.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is carried. Thank you. Now for our finished section, Bill Number 3716.
This do not need to be read and told. Just a motion to accept the substitutes and settle for second and third reading of public hearing on August...
Twenty seconds. Twenty seconds.
Separate motions or combined?
They can be combined.
Okay. Motion to accept the substitutes for 3716 and 3816?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same side.
Motion to send 3716 and 3816 to zoning annexation for August 22.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same side. It is carried. Again, we want to remind everybody before we close out and have our public, uh, members of the floor, wish lists. We'd like for you to send them regarding the Tiff situation as soon as possible from Sakena. And also updates on your streets regarding the money that have come in to Councilwoman Joe Broden as soon as possible from each district. And so, was there any other new business that I have forgotten or you would like to share at this time? On the side? This side? Seeing none, we now move to our members of the floor. Members of the floor, it gives you, what, three minutes each to share your thoughts about what's going on. And you can come before us, the council. Please line up here so we can be expeditious with our time. If you're planning to speak before the members of the floor, three minutes, state your name and address, and share your concerns, and we then will hear you and respond accordingly. Go ahead.
Okay. I want to try to get my three minutes working done. My name is Samuel Brown. I live at 222 East of our street.
Excuse me one second, Mr. Brown. There was, just, this is not going to be ahead of schedule, so don't start this clock because I interrupted him. There's a signing sheet by behind, Mr. Brown. Just please sign in your name and address and then go ahead and share your thoughts. And you can speak on anything that was not on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Okay. Uh, back on the stand. I'm going to try to do this real quick because I want to commend Oliver Davis for number one. Oliver Davis is doing an excellent job on issues that affect our city. I got letters he's sent to the mayor, to the sister mayor, about things that affect our city. And I really appreciate the fine work he's doing. Keep up the good work. And I would like to do anything I could to support anything that you do. Thank you. Okay.
Nice.
South Bend is moving right along. I was fortunate enough to go to a press conference that we're going to put a statue of Dr. King and Father Hesford in downtown South Bend. I'm really proud of that. Whenever you do something good, there's always seem to be something bad comes along with that. And I got one of the press release, because it wasn't pretty much scrubber, that made me really proud that day that I was at that ceremony. But then on the back of the press release, it said, "This is completely separate project from the Montecito Jones Street renaming, which the city continue to work on and hope to resolve by the end of the year." Somebody wanted to make sure that this wasn't tied in with the Montecito Street. That kind of disappointed me, but it is still, I support this. Okay. Since I worked on this committee, I get this in the papers, in the front page of the South Bend Privium, which really hurt me, how the town broke the law. Everybody's calling me saying, "You're going to jail? We got commissary money for you?" And all that. I'm a little disappointed. I'm not worried about going to jail. I've been there before. But what weird bothers me is that the city employer, Mr. Biggs, he lost, is one of the people that's ejected the team drive being escaped. The guy, I committed him for his thoughts and being big enough to speak out, even though he was a city employee. But what weird bothers me is that Mr. Masters has some names that he's withholding. They are owners, citizens, or what? Because they said that they don't want to be labeled, they don't want the name out there because they don't want to be labeled racist. You know what? Anything to do with the dark when it comes to the light. And these people are trying to hide and throw rocks, just like the rich lady that said, "King drive" would never, no, "Studebaker Museum" would never be on "King Drive." We all know who she is. So you throwing rocks, the light gonna come on you.
Hello, Jan Michalski, 1117 South 31st Street, South Bend, Indiana. I've been here before. I just wanted to remind everybody that we still care about, I'm from Protect Potomony Park, and we still care about where the fireplace or the fire station is going to be placed. You know, I'm really kind of frustrated because for a while, you know, it was in the newspaper and we were kind of hearing things. And then after the last common council meeting, I did speak to a couple of common council members, one who had an opinion that, you know, sounded pretty positive that it wasn't going to be in the park, and another one had totally opposite opinion. So I'm still frustrated because, you know, we've done a lot of work. We've collected a lot of signatures, we've attended a lot of meetings, we've really collected information and tried to disseminate it. But now, you know, I made two phone calls today, one to Mr. Perry and one to Chief Cox, and either one called back, and I called at about nine o'clock this morning, so then I went back and called back at about 3:30, and again, nobody was available. I just want to know. I mean, isn't that something that we should know? I've been told they're looking at another place, but I was also told by a fireman that be careful what you wish for. Maybe it's going to be right directly across from the park. So I just don't think that as citizens get involved and they really put some effort out, that it would really be nice if there was communication and that that wasn't just something that, you know, wasn't there. I, you know, I love this city. This is my city. I fight for things that I think are right. I still totally believe that the fire station number nine can go elsewhere, and I know that there are other properties. I don't think that that was ever really further researched totally. And I think, again, that they expect that this is an open land, and so that it's perfect to move right in there, but it's not perfect because it's parks. And we still need to reserve those parks for our future and for today, too. So, anyway, have a good evening. Thank you.
Doris Bradley, Reed 3310, Donovan Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. This is addressed to Mayor Pete, Honorable Councilwoman Karen White, Honorable Councilman Garrick Furley, Gavin Furley, I'm sorry. Honorable Councilman John Gordy, Honorable Councilman Oliver Davis, Sixth District, and also to Mr. Eric Horvath, Director of Public Works and other honorable council persons. This is regarding inclusion in the city sidewalk project that is improving my neighborhood. In 1969, my husband and I moved to South Bend and immediately purchased a home at 3310 Donovan Street. I have lived in this home for 47 years. We raised our three children in this home. I have enjoyed my neighborhood and improved my property as necessary. My home is one block south of Harrison Primary School. I note that the city has a sidewalk improvement project going on in my neighborhood to our west, north, east, and south. My concern, and the concern of those who live on this block, is that it appears that there will be no sidewalk improvement on our block. There have not been any markings of utilities on either side of our block. Our concern, we have done our parts for keeping up our home as a good neighborhood. All I ask is that the city sidewalk project for our neighborhood and area goes forth that our block be treated the same. If we are not included for the new sidewalks for this block, then I request that we be added to the project so that we will not be treated differently. My concern, and the concern of those who live on this block, is that it appears that there will be no sidewalk improvement on our block. There have not been any markings of utilities on either side of our block. Our concern, we have done our parts for keeping up our home as a good neighborhood. All I ask is that the city sidewalk project for our neighborhood and area goes forth, that our block be treated the same. If we are not included for the new sidewalks for this block, then I request that we be added to the project, so that we will not be treated differently than those to the west, north, east, and south. Additionally, I am making a request that all of Kentucky Street between Western and Sample be included in your sidewalk project for the area. This is a very important street for this part of the neighborhood. I and my neighbors on the block would greatly appreciate having us treated the same. And the, uh, the petition is signed by Gregory Brown, these are people on Dunham Street and, uh, Lake Street. Terrell Porter, Shawna Porter, Danny Thomas, Leroy Williams, Nicole Johnson, Melvin Reed, Lesvia Hernandez-
You have thirty seconds.
Pardon me?
Sorry, you, you have thirty seconds.
Alright. Doris Caldwell, Lesvia Hernandez, again, sorry, repeat that, Esmeralda Gomez. I appreciate your consideration.
Good evening, council, and all its members. That was my wife. In nineteen sixty-five, in March that year, I had a couple opportunities to work in communities that weren't my home. I selected South Bend because I liked what was here. I came here in nineteen sixty-five for an architectural drafting, as an architectural engineering draftsmen. I worked for the largest engineering and architectural firm in the state at that time, it was nineteen sixty-five. I worked on schools, couple of you may have heard, Smarter, Driss. I worked on several schools in this area, I worked on bridges, roads. Our business was to design, and to make things work. I liked South Bend, and I like what you're doing to it now. There's a lot of design work goes on. My concern is this, property values. When you're dealing with design, and you're dealing with those kinds of things, you're concerned about the property value of the building and the neighborhood. So when I walk out my door in the morning, and I look west, I see three blocks, fresh new concrete. Those streets didn't look much different than mine. I turn to the east of the rising sun, and I'm gonna see three more blocks. I see it north, and I see it south. My block's not been done. Okay? Um, values of a neighborhood are very valuable, and the design, how it looks. Sidewalks and shrubs are probably more important than the house, if you riding down the street and looking. So sidewalks are very important. So that was my wife's letter, and we're asking that we be included in that. And that in the future, when you're doing these kinds of projects, let us not make them look like hodgepots. Bring the designing, the benefits of neighborhood, okay? That's all I have to say, please help us.
Name and for the record.
Oh, excuse me, Melvin Reed, thirty-three ten Dunham Street. Uh, um-
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next.
My name is Angela Sodi, I live on thirteen eighteen North Lafayette Boulevard. Um, I purchased my house about fourteen years ago, and I have a really big issue with something that is called an isthmus. I've spoken to Joe Broden before, several times. Um, I am being bombarded by different departments of the city, uh, with penalties, uh, for the, for the maintenance of this isthmus, which belongs to the city. Um, the property is not mine, it's almost two hundred feet. My front yard is completely, um, uh, taken care of. I never knew that I was supposed to care of this almost two hundred feet of wooded area, uh, on Hill Street, behind my, my, my house. We're not talking about grass or small shrubs. I've spoken to Joe many times, I've been here, you're my neighbor, and, um, we're talking about really old trees. We're not talking about five trees, or ten trees, or thirty trees. There may be even over one hundred trees. Some of them are really, really tall and big and old. I cannot afford to, to maintain that isthmus property. And I have been threatened many times of, um, even losing my house. If, if I don't maintain this property, I am really, really frustrated. And I really would like some, um, answers as to why, when people buy these houses on this, uh, North Shore Triangle area, uh, we're not being told by the way you have to take care of all these, uh, hundreds of, um, feet of wooded area. Because I was never told that I had to take care of that. I knew that my city, uh, my property ended where there, where there is a boulder in my backyard. And I never knew that I had to maintain all those, uh, hundreds of feet of wooded area, and-
You have thirty seconds.
And I really need help. I don't think it's right. And I have contacted many people, and I have bills and bills and bills, and I think this is just wrong.
Thank you.
Please have.
Next. Name and address.
Uh, Glenn Jose, fifteen fourteen half, South, um, South Mission Street, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, are the geese problem, no, that's-
We can't discuss the geese, bro.
We can't discuss them, I thought?
No.
Okay, well, anyway, alright, well, we're gonna talk about, um, those folks that are down there sleeping underneath the vines, can you do that?
Yep.
Okay, now, that's a problem. You know, we got people down there working, probably beautifying the city, building the roads down there. And we got people sleeping underneath the vines, it smell like urine down there. I don't know what the council's gonna do about it, I don't know if they're gonna get ahead of the game, or let it jump back up like the, the burrows. You know, see it, don't do nothing about it, that's a problem. Okay, and then, uh, as I was saying about the west side over there. You know, we coming out of Western Street, clean, nice, coming out of Washington Street, by the South Center, or come over the railroad track, they got the bike, the bike, little stripped here. Speechless was happening down through there, at all. I don't know why, maybe the machines are broke or something like that, I, I'm not for sure. Maybe y'all can find out, y'all look all college educated. But, you know, main thing is, uh, if y'all can do that, make South Bend look better, and all the things that y'all stand for, and do it for South Bend, everybody appreciates it more. And then also another, okay, they want us to get along with the South Bend police, which is terrific. I agree. But, you know, you can't go into somebody's house, wake them up, whip them, go to, go to Fort Wayne, give them a check for a dollar, add an insult to what's happened, and think it's all good. We can't be friends, how we gonna be friends if this is happening to, you're just making us be on your side, or be your friend, you know? Because you can come to the house, whip us up, and then give us a dollar, and say we sorry, go to communion, uh, confess our sins, and it's a done deal. I mean, what they did in Fort Wayne, they could've did here. And, uh, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next. Alright. Gentlemen there, I'll be the last one. Uh, hold on, she's timing up? Okay, we take, go ahead, lady. Go ahead, we take two.
Alright, my name's Charles Smith, twenty twenty-three South Hayley Street, just clarified about the, the homeless suffering in the bridge, on Main Street, that's getting cleaned up tomorrow morning. The director was down there today, um, he actually told me exactly what they were gonna do, 'cause last year, I'm proud of what they did, and I wasn't very happy what they did last year, but I also understand what's going on right now, there's definitely a big problem down there. Um, but, on a different subject, real quick, I'm gonna bounce over to South Bend Animal Care Control, and the ordinances of South Bend. The ordinances of South Bend is probably one of the best in the country, it's very recognized, but there's one problem, it's not getting enforced. There's excuses between budget, lack of staff, or they don't have enough resources, and, uh, you know, there's definitely animals in the community that are suffering on a daily basis. Um, I actually have a few cases sitting at home, some of them are pretty disturbing. Um, one that's been going on for over a year, where a dog has been, like, outside twenty-four seven, South Bend Animal Care Control, went there, they even told neighbors, "Go knock on the door." I mean, come on now, you're telling other people, "Go knock on somebody's door, hey, get your dog inside." Uh, with that case, now the dog is being bred, and South Bend Animal Care Control went there, people, uh, actually had the puppies in their hand. Um, several neighbors are concerned about that property. That property is very concerning, number one, they went around and boarded up all the basement windows. That's a bad, bad, red, red, red flag. They also put up a high privacy fence where you can't see, but you can hear. Um, another thing back to the ordinance is, actions speak louder than words, the words are on the paper, but in reality, on the streets, it's not happening, and the community is pretty frustrated about it. You know, and they feel like they're not being heard. I understand there's a big change coming up at South Bend Animal Care Control, which I'm not gonna share to the public, 'cause it's not my place to put it. Um, but then also, another thing when it comes to criminal investigations involving animals. There was one that happened very recently, it was very disturbing. Um, not only was I on scene, South Bend Police Department was on scene, officers were pretty upset with the way-
Thirty seconds.
Okay, with the way it was handled. But I'm gonna be coming back, and hopefully, next time I come here, there's no children present, where I can actually present exactly what I'm talking about, and show you the exact examples of what's going on in South Bend, which are pretty alarming. But we definitely have a big problem in this area that needs to be fixed and addressed real quick, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Earl Porter, I live at thirty-three oh five Dunham Street, and I'm here to talk about the, uh, concerns with our sidewalks, um, with, with the improvement, where everyone around us is getting that sidewalk repaired, within our street. Uh, Saturday morning, my neighbor's daughter, she was walking, and she walked around the, on the sidewalk, she tripped and hit her face on the, uh, bumper of my car. This sidewalk is, it's still this much off the foundation. We have grass that's growing in between the cracks, and things like that, and, um, my neighbor's daughter was pretty much dirty, you know? And those sidewalks on our street really need to be repaired. And our street is another thing, with, from Lake and, um, Dunham right there, it's like, it's like riding on a roller coaster. I spent, uh, over eight hundred bucks getting my car fixed from the struts, the shocks, and the tires, because it's so healing when you come, when you're coming down that street. And my neighbor just the other day, he said he seen a guy, uh, pretty much almost lose his muffler, from the sparks and things falling off, uh, you know, with all the heels that were coming down the street, so we're really concerned about that. So if you can get someone over there and check that out, you know, and I really feel bad for a little girl that hit her face on the bumper of my car due to the lack of someone, you know, not fixing our sidewalks. This is a public thing, this is a city thing, and I just want you guys to get on there, get things done for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Doris Caldwell, I stay at one thirty-three oh nine West Dunham, and I know what he talking about. Now, uh, eight, nine, ten years ago, they had a program going around to fix sidewalks. And I paid to have part of my sidewalk fixed. They haven't done anything on Dunham Street, and I don't know when. They'll go down Kentucky Street, they'll go down the other street, in the middle of the street, put black tar down in the middle of the street down there, but they won't come down Dunham, and I've been there fifty-something years. And like he said, that street is just like a roller coaster. People come down through there flying, and, and next thing you know, the car is up in the air, and, and it's bumping. They go on the other street, up there on the other street, and tear down streets that's already got good sidewalk, but they won't take ours down. I asked the guy one day, I said, "Why?" He said, "I don't know, they just said they weren't gonna do Dunham Street." That is not fair. It's not fair. They went up to Kentucky Street, Kentucky go here, they went over to Kentucky Street, on the other side of Dunham Street, and fixed that street, they fixing that street. But that, those eight houses, that eight blocks, right, in that section, they're not doing anything for two. And I don't think it's fair. I done got mad, I'm angry. I don't think it's fair at all, I pay my taxes like everybody else pay their taxes. And there's some people don't pay their taxes, they get more than what I get. And I'm there, I keep my house looking nice, I think it's nice, my yard is cut, my hedge is done, I keep my house looking nice. And I can't get a sidewalk, that's a shame. It's really a shame. And I don't know whoever decided to do this, miss, uh, miss my street, I hope, I hope something happens to their street.
Jason Bedekey, Crystal, thirty-eight twenty-two, West Forest Street. I'm gonna issue you guys a challenge, leaving here today as we head into budget season. I want you to prove to me that you guys can handle a serious situation much better than St. Joe County did last year. There is no doubt that heroin and opioid addiction has attacked our city just like it has the rest of the nation. And yet, the, the county commissioners, the prosecutor, the sheriff decided that the best way to ta- handle this problem is to spend one million dollars reconstituting a drug unit. That last time they did it was ripe with corruption, and made zero impact on the impact that drugs have on our community and individuals. And so far through that thing, they've had about two, two arrests of street-level dealers. But I want to see out of the city of South Bend is that we understand that the way to attack the problem is not through criminal legislation, not through unfair enforcement of laws that has made zero impact in fifty years of law on drugs. But to say that we know that we can, in fact, impact people's lives and make our community better by putting some dollars into treatment programs that will greatly reduce the amount of people that, that use drugs. That, that the way to, to reduce the, the use, dependency, and violence associated with drugs in our neighborhood is through treatment and care, and reduce of the demand for drugs, not the supply side. We know for every, basically, hundred dollars spent on reducing the demand side, we get a ten times greater impact than we do fighting the supply side, 'cause you arrest one drug dealer, another one pops up a week later. So as we go into this budget season, let's match their million dollars spent on criminal enforcement with a million or so spent on healthcare and treatment programs, and see if South Bend comes out with a better outcome than St. Joe County's come out with so far.
Thank you. I just brought a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? It is carried. Thank you, we all adjourned.